Councilmember Bertrand.
President.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Here.
And Mayor Story.
Uh, here. Um, and Chloe, do you want to make a, uh, preliminary announcement for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with California Senate Bill three sixty-one, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website and our YouTube channel. As always, the meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel Eight, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at eight AM, and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at one PM, on Charter Channel seventy-one and Comcast Channel twenty-five. And our technician tonight is Olivia. Thank you so much, Olivia, and thank you, Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Chloe, and, uh, also thank you, Olivia, uh, for handling our technology tonight, and welcome to all those future viewers that may, um, tune in. Um, so at this time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance, and, um, and may I ask, uh, Councilmember Brooks, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions, allegiance to the agenda this evening?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, any additional material?
No, none were received, Mayor Story.
Now, um, we'll have, uh, oral communication from members of the public. Um, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items that are not on the announced agenda or are on the consent agenda, uh, for this evening. Uh, if you would like to speak, uh, you can raise your hand in Zoom, um, or dial star nine. The moderator will give you up to three minutes to speak. Um, you may also send an email to publiccomment@ci Capitola.ca.us. Um, and Larry, I'm not, I'm noticing that we have no attendees.
We, I don't see any attendees at this point, and we do not have any emails.
Okay, I'm gonna move us forward then, on to the next item, which is, uh, uh, staff and city council comments. Do we have any staff comments?
I don't believe we have the comments for the council this evening.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Um, councilmember comments? Um, Councilmember Bertrand. You're on mute still?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, yes, on, on the AAA Advisory Board, and yesterday, I was at the meeting at ten o'clock in the morning, and, um, some very distressing news was relayed to all of us. Um, I think it came about a day earlier, but we had discussion about it. So, um, a lot of you are aware of the, uh, Mid-County, um, senior services. There, there's, uh, senior network services, um, um, a whole mess of other things that are senior-related. Uh, the most, uh, big one is the one that delivers food to people around the county. And, um, so they're being evicted. The, uh, land, the buildings, is owned by Live Oak School District, and they just received a six-month eviction notice. Um, a lot of the mayors are getting together around the county. Uh, Sandy is reaching out around, um, in Santa Cruz. So, this is very important, the fact that the facility is to prepare food, um, and the Congress is setting their, um, senior network services, which provides a lot of counseling to people who are going on Medicare and need to figure out, um, you know, which programs to take. Uh, they provide many other services, but this has been a critical, uh, senior service hub in, uh, Santa Cruz County for a long time. It's part of the, uh, district or the county plan. Um, so as you can imagine, the scramble, uh, and I, you know, I have no idea what the future is. Uh, people, um, are meeting, I believe, um, like Mono, Zach, and, and others are trying to come together with, uh, the school district to figure out, um, how to move forward. Um, I'm not part of the discussions, but, um, I, I do think that we should get involved on some level. Uh, Jamie, if you could reach out to other city managers, 'cause I don't know how many hundreds of people, for instance, in Capitola are receiving food and other services from these facilities. Uh, it's a great concern, uh, to me, and I think it's gonna have a huge impact on the county of Santa Cruz. It's not just Capitola, but it's all of the county. Uh, food deliveries, um, are from the Sonnet all the way down to, you know, every single city, Watsonville, Santa Cruz, all over the place. So, it's gonna have a severe impact for seniors in this whole county. And, uh, I think, and I just don't know how it's gonna be moved forward to, uh, deal with this issue. I really don't, um, so.
Right, um, well, thank, thank you, Don, for, for bringing up that, uh, sobering news.
It's pretty sobering, actually.
And, um, well, and just, uh, um, you know, that location is the central kitchen, uh,
Right.
The Meals on Wheels, uh, those kind of get dining centers.
Right.
And those are all of them throughout the county, um, as well as, um, um, home delivery meals program. So, that is gonna be a first of service that we need to make sure that is not interrupted. And, you know, if this move, uh, does need to take place, but, um, yeah, I would certainly like to, um, you know, get involved and see what I could do, um, um, to kind of bridge, um, this, uh, transition.
Yeah, I think the mayor, I, I think just to continue, I, I did get a sense that, that the mayors of the various cities are gonna try to get together, 'cause, you know, the, the heads of basically the city, you know, provide the services and, you know, try to keep things going, so.
Yeah.
I know that's happening, so let's start letting you know.
And thank you. And I expect it'll come up through the Mayor Select Committee.
Probably, yeah.
So, do other councilmembers, um, have any, um, comments or announcements? Um, seeing none, um, I just, I wanted to make, uh, one, I think, acknowledgement, recognition, and praise to, uh, Chief Alley, um, under the Capitola PLA, was sponsoring the Skateola event last Saturday, uh, May the fourteenth, uh, at, uh, McGregor Park. Um, it was a spectacular event. There were dozens of, uh, young kids there, um, um, showing off their athletic skills, um, they were all very impressive. Um, and they were, of course, there were many parents who were in attendance. Um, and, um, so it, it was a fabulous event. Um, it was very well, uh, sponsored by local businesses. I know the Santa Cruz Boardroom was a sponsor, um, and the Santa Cruz Apparel was a sponsor. Um, I, I don't wanna, you know, miss anyone, but, uh, there were many, um, business, um, sponsorship, uh, that made the event happen. Um, so I just wanted to encourage, um, the city council to, um, support this event. Um, you know, as it, you know, comes around, hopefully, it can be an annual event. Um, and, um, because it's great to support the kids, um, and, and their, um, skateboarding skills, and it's also great to see, uh, police officers interacting, um, you know, with these kids, um, in that, in that environment, um, uh, through that sport. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, say congratulations to Chief Alley, and to all the PLA and the officers who were there, um, it, it, it was wonderful, so. Um, so, um, is there, was there, Chief Alley, I don't, was there a major sponsor that I should have mentioned that I, that I maybe missed and want to acknowledge?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Story. Thank you for your comments, and I know the council supports it and the city supports it. Uh, really, another big sponsor was our own rec department, Nikki and her staff really helped out. And then, um, Josh from the Mercantile, so he's been man of many hats, and so he donated, um, his Three Up Front and Sausage Works and his Daily Grind. So, those are kind of, with the boardroom, the Santa Cruz Apparel, they were kind of the keynote sponsors. But definitely a city-sponsored event, and the PLA was in huge, uh, huge support financially as well. So, great event, we're gonna keep it going, um, and so thank you so much. I appreciate it. I will, I will let our staff as well.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Um, and, um, so with that, I see no other council comments. I'm gonna.
There's one more comment.
Um, okay, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Bertrand.
A vet, aren't you gonna say something about your organization's, uh, participation?
I have salad in my teeth. I'm sorry. What, what organization? What thing?
Well, um, you know, I was there too, and, and I met two, uh, ladies there, and they said that they were part of your organization, and had a table there for reaching out to youth. So, I was very impressed with, uh, your staff members, and, uh, very enthusiastic, and they gave me a description of what your organization does, and it sounds like it's really a wonderful thing to have in this community, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Yeah, your future is our business, is, is doing great things in the community, supporting students, and, um, and to what was at the event, Chief Alley, you also have the Youth Action Network there, um, tabling, and they are one of our partners for Capitola City Council, um, in engaging youth in the community, and, um, and really collaborating right now with the, uh, your department, Chief Alley, and, um, with Parks and Rec. So, thanks, Councilmember Bertrand, for reminding me. Thank you for the shout-out.
You can't forget, 'cause they were one of, well, aside from the little kids, little kids. Aside from the kids that were showing their stuff, they were very enthusiastic. And I just have to remark, first of all, um, I saw some of the earlier events, I had to go somewhere, so. Uh, but the little kids that were doing their best, and the parents watching them, it was really a treat. Very much a treat.
That's great. Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand, for, uh, bringing that to our attention. Thanks for, uh, filling us in, Councilmember Brooks. Um, seeing no other council comments, I'm gonna take it to the consent, uh, agenda tonight. Now, there's only one item which we approved in minutes of the May fourth, twenty-twenty-two special meeting, um. Does any councilmember want to pull this item for, for more discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I can move to the second.
Yeah, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Kaiser and a second by Councilmember Brown. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please, uh, Chloe?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to item, uh, seven A, uh, which is the, uh, the order of, of business for this evening, which is the presentation of the proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the City of Capitola and the Capitola Prosecutor Agency. Um, and just to confirm that our recommended action is to, uh, is acting as the city council and as the prosecutor agency, is to receive the proposed budget and provide staff direction, and we can either continue these budget deliberations to the next regular scheduled joint budget hearing on June the first, or direct staff to prepare the documents for final budget adoption at the regular meetings in June and cancel future planned budget hearings. With that, can we have our staff presentation, please?
Sure. I'll just kick things off really quickly before turning it over to Finance Director Jim Maldur. Um, Mayor Story, I think you gave a pretty good summary of what we're doing this evening. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to circle back on some of the questions that were identified at the first budget hearing, provide a little bit of, um, sort of staff-level cleanup, and also a few little tweaks based on the council feedback we got last meeting. Identify any additional, um, items that council would like us to cover, and then we'll just have to make a decision if we're gonna go to another budget hearing, or if council will be ready to adopt, uh, later on in June. So, with that, Jim, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Let me take a moment to share my screen. Is that looking okay, Larry?
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you. So, um, I think, uh, both the mayor and MRC manager gave a good overview of what we're doing tonight. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get started with the summary, kind of recapping our last meeting, and then kind of get into what we're talking about tonight. So, um, the proposed general fund budget as it sits right now, uh, we're estimating an ending fund balance in June of twenty-twenty-three of one point three million. As a reminder, we also have three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars set aside in the resiliency account. Um, so there is a potential to utilize fund balance in this coming fiscal year, whether we do that, um, through this proposed budget, or whether we come back at mid-year. We will have the ability to do that at some point this year, should the council choose. Um, as a reminder, we have a little over three point five million dollars allocated for city council goals. And on our five-year forecast, um, beginning next year, we start using Measure F to balance out, which works until, um, Measure F sunsets in December of twenty-twenty-seven. So, as far as the multi-year budget projection, these are, the top, the blue box area shows our revenue projection. So, fairly conservative, uh, revenue projections going out. Also down towards the bottom is the Measure F to operations, um, starting in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, one fifty-five, and kind of increasing there until that sunsets. Um, that gets us a, this year, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, we're, um, out of balance, structurally out of balance by design, as we program, um, available resources to city council goals. But we are balanced, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four through twenty-seven, and then you'll see when Measure F expires, there at the end, we come out of balance. So, we'll have to address that in the coming years. As far as the general fund summary, uh, we're at nineteen point six, almost nineteen point seven million of revenues. That's up slightly from the last meeting, and I'll, I'll get into that. Um, the twenty-two point two, almost three million of expenditures, um, is up slightly, also from last time, and I will cover that as well. And our impact on fund balance, as I just said, we're gonna, um, spend almost two point six million more than we're bringing in, but that's by design, and will still leave us with a one point three, almost one point four million dollar budget fund balance. And then when we, um, account for the resiliency account, that takes our estimated ending fund balance to one point seven five million in June of twenty-twenty-three. As far as some of the key items, we covered on May fourth, uh, staffing. If you recall, we're, uh, requesting to return two and a half positions that were frozen during the pandemic. We're also requesting to add one twenty-eight positions, uh, one in public works, and then the seventeen hundred hour rec coordinator position that I'll do by her in junior grade, um, for state junior management. But we are maintaining, um, one frozen three-quarter time position and three partially filled positions that total one point seven five in whole and the other all together. Excuse me. Uh, our early childhood and youth program or ECYP funding, we're estimating revenue this year of sixty, or fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three of sixty-one thousand. We also are estimating a beginning fund balance of fifty-one thousand. That's down from the first hearing, um, since the first budget hearing. I've got together with our, our recreation manager, Nikki, and there was thirty thousand dollars of ECYP funding for the current fiscal year, and, um, I'm working with Nikki to get that allocated out to the things that, um, it was, um, allocated for. So, we'll get, we'll get that thirty thousand out. We also, um, adjusted our, uh, revenue estimate up a little bit. So, the net of those two changes has taken that fund balance beginning next year to fifty-one thousand. And then again, the general fund balance that's made in, uh, in June of next year at one point three plus the resiliency accounts. The mayor budget adjustments that we've made since May fourth. So, if you recall, um, on, when we put together the proposed budget, we, I didn't have a really good feel for what the outdoor dining program was gonna look like after May thirty-first. Council's kind of, um, set the parameters up for that, so we bumped up, um, village. I'm calling it parking revenue. That's really the revenue that will be generated from the parking spaces gen, uh, dedicated to outdoor dining. Right now, we've gotten applications for twenty-four, so I'm running the twenty-four spaces. Um, police department staffing, so I, this is the, um, kind of cleanup that Jamie was mentioning. I had a math error, and I had two positions reversed, so cleaning that up is an increase in the budget of, um, thirty-one, seven, fifty. But what that is, is really more cleanup. It's representative of the current staffing down in TD. Um, it's not building up. I think we're bumping, asking to take the admin analyst on a permanent basis to full-time. Um, but that was, that was in the request last time, but this is more cleanup. Um, city council training, uh, we had missed this one last time, so we're bumping that budget by seven thousand, which returns to our pre-pandemic, uh, level of two thousand per council member. We've also increased our training budget by five thousand dollars, uh, for implicit bias training. We're putting that into the, um, personnel division within the city manager's department, and it is a single-line item that we will budget for every year for transparency, and that's to provide the ongoing training for both elected officials and staff for implicit bias. Um, regional homeless response, we're decreasing the general fund contribution to half by thirty thousand dollars. And basically what we're doing, um, is we, we contribute just under forty thousand dollars a year to half, which is the Home Affairs Partnership. Um, thirty thousand of that is for homeless shelter costs. We're moving that from the general fund into the special revenue fund, which is an eligible expense of that fund. So, we're, we're moving it, but not, or we're still funding the program. It's just not coming out of the general fund. Um, the art and cultural budget, we're increasing by fifteen hundred dollars for, uh, to program in the Beguine Commemorative Event. And then also universal park design, we'll have some more info on this later, but that's the, um, accessible play structure, moving that project from the library to, uh, the J Street Community Center and Park area. So, we do have some additional items to cover that were mentioned in the staff report. And, um, just kind of a summary of those is listed here on the slide. I think I need to read each one, but basically the first eight, we will have, um, deeper discussion as we go through the presentation this evening. The bottom two, the report on the city's liability risk, uh, is gonna come from a memo outside of the budget hearings from the, to the council, from the city attorney. And city council compensation will also be outside of the budget hearings, and, um, the fact had a meeting on Tuesday of this week, and we put that on the agenda for our regular meeting in July. So, with that, I'm gonna get into some of the additional items and turn this over to City Manager Goldstein.
Thank you, Jim. So, there was a question at the last meeting about how online sales tax works for the City of Capitola, that we've seen impacts from the shift, uh, from brick and mortar sales to online sales. Short answer is yes. Um, you can see here in this table, in two thousand seventeen, we were getting about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty, seven thousand dollars a quarter, um, from online and used auto sales. And in twenty-twenty-one, that shifted up to between two fifty and, gosh, three seventy, it looks like. So, the way online and used auto sales works is that all those sales that take place in the county, so any online transaction by anyone in the county, goes what's into, it's called the county pool. And then what happens is the county pool gets distributed back to the cities based on our percentage of brick and mortar sales in the county. Historically, Capitola has been around fifteen percent of the brick and mortar sales in the county, and you can see that back in twenty-seventeen where our, our, our percentage allocations in the pool fluctuated between fifteen point six and fourteen point four percent. Um, that has trended downward in recent years, and you can see this last year, in twenty-twenty-one, it was between eleven point eight and thirteen point eight. And the downward trend is probably just another symptom of the longer-term trend we've seen in Capitola, where our sales tax hasn't kept up with inflation, so that probably county-wide it is, but ours is sort of gradually eroding to some degree. Uh, an explanation of how this came to be, I think used auto sales historically were difficult to pin to an address. So, that was, I think, the origin of this county pool. And then when online sales first showed up, uh, the State Board of Equalization just said, "This is the way to do it. We'll dump it in the pool and then just allocate it." Um, obviously, um, it's becoming a larger and larger source of revenue, which has resulted in more and more focus by different cities on this. So, it is actually something that I'm, I'm working actually at a state level for a league committee that's looking at sales tax, because there was a push by some cities to reform this mechanism for distribution of online sales recently, uh, which would have a pretty significant negative impact on Capitola. My, based on the estimates that we have done internally, we think that if this mechanism was shifted, we probably would end up getting, you know, between four and five percent of the countywide pool. Um, and so you can see, that would be a pretty significant hit to our budget if we shifted from averaging around twelve to thirteen percent to four to five percent. So, it's something I'm definitely tracking, um, and there's, and there, and it is probably gonna be an ongoing issue as more and more sales shift online. Next slide, Jim? Then the other question I was gonna cover tonight was about the Monterey Bay Health Insurance Authority, and how our premiums this year for liability in particular has gone up pretty significantly. So, just a little bit of background, Monterey Bay Health Insurance Authority, we call it EMBAJA, is a partnership with nine other cities, where it's a ten-city joint powers authority. And basically, it's an insurance and work comp insurance entity for all the member agencies. Uh, so we effectively operate as our, our own insurance company, if you will. We also, in EMBAJA, provide programs to purchase property insurance, crime, cyber, some of these other kinds of policies that the city, um, buys. The costs, the premiums basically, get distributed to the cities based on the city's size and the city's history, your claims history, call that experience. And in general, our costs as member agencies will change, because either, A, the overall budget for insurance has gone up, which is happening, and I'll talk more about that in a second, or as an individual city, you're having a lot of claims, in which case your costs can be rising because your experience factor is going up. And here we go to the next slide. So, the first little chart up there, this isn't our data, actually. This is from a, a, a JPA of JPAs that provides excess insurance coverage. It's called Prism. And Prism often will cover cities for, EMBAJA, for claims beyond a million dollars. And you can see that ten years ago statewide, there was about sixty active claims of a million dollars or more, and that number is almost up to a hundred and sixty today. And it's not necessarily due to more claims, more problems in cities. It's part, almost exclusively due to claims escalation, that particularly over the last three years, with so much attention on policing and public safety, the jury awards, what maybe historically, previously was a two million dollar award, is suddenly a four million dollar award, or maybe what a five million dollar award is about ten. And in addition, there's been some just astronomical claims, um, that have been paid out, particularly in the, by some public agencies, more of the universities around sexual harassment or misconduct. Uh, I believe that there's been some claim, USC, I think, had a billion-dollar claim, and the University of Southern Calif, or University, UCLA, had multiple hundred million dollar-plus claims, which has the effect of basically freezing out the insurance market, that the people that provide this insurance are like, whoa, you know, we, we can't get in this market to provide coverage for these things, because these costs, uh, could just be so, so, uh, derivative. So, on the liability budget at EMBAJA, we share, we split the costs up fifty percent based on payroll, that's the size of the city, and fifty percent based on experience. Capitola, um, we represent about ten point three percent of the EMBAJA payroll. We are essentially the average city. There's ten cities. We're ten percent of the overall payroll. And that's a pretty constant number. Uh, our claims history on liability is a variable. Uh, this year, we're eleven point five of the claims history during the period of time that we look at. Uh, and interestingly, that has been relatively constant during my tenure on the EMBAJA board. You know, sometimes we'll dip below ten percent, sometimes we've gone a little bit above, but we're pretty close around that, that eleven, ten, eleven, nine percent, which is actually a little bit interesting if you think about the EMBAJA membership, which includes a lot of cities that don't have the same risk profile that we do. Uh, there's Salinas Valley Cities, Scotts Valley, um, Marina. And those cities generally don't have the same level of tourist traffic and the same level of commercial activity taking place in the city. So it is interesting that we tend to be an average claim city, even though in some ways we probably have a different risk profile. So what the increase, we saw a nineteen percent increase in our premium this year. And overall, our AMBAJA liability budget increased at sixteen percent. So we were tracking pretty close there. We got a little teeny bump, a three percent bump from experience, and we'll look at that in a second here. And the sixteen percent budget up in our overall budget is because our excess carrier, um, we don't use Prism. We actually use Karma, but I got the Prism data more easily. Karma, um, our, that's our cost for excess insurance went from seven fifty a year ago to next year's budget. We think it's going to be one point six, one point seven million. So Karma is kind of blowing up. You know, they're, they're, they're looking for way more money because they have so many high cost claims coming in. And so in addition, we've also, uh, the AMBAJA board moved our, how much, how confident we are in our fund. So each year we get an actuarial report that says, here's how much money you should put aside. And there's recommendations, like if you want to be fifty percent sure that you have enough money each year, you fund it level X. And if you want to be sixty percent sure, you love, fund a little bit more, seventy percent sure, you want to fund a little more. We actually moved our confidence level up this year because we don't seem to be catching up as fast as we would like in our overall financial position and trying to get ourselves stabilized as an insurance company, basically. So those are the reasons for the sixteen percent increase. And that's the primary driver between our nineteen percent overall liability budget increase. Next slide. Can I get the next? Thank you. Can folks hear me okay or am I frozen?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Well, I, I, I can hear you and see you, Jenny.
Oh, okay, you guys can hear me and see me.
It's, I, yes, and heard you.
And heard me. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let's back up one slide, Jim. For whatever reason, everyone was frozen there on my screen for about a minute. So this is how we look at the, um, basically the loss runs to generate the experience factor. Losses were nine oh two, which made up eleven point five percent of the overall claims experience. You've noticed, um, city second from the through what?
Yeah, you're, Jamie, you're cutting in and out.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Maybe just go audio.
I'm afraid I'm still frozen.
Jamie, if you, if you can go just audio, turn off your video, it sometimes helps.
Well, am I back?
We're back.
All right, I'm not sure what's going on. I will keep forging ahead and text my family to make sure they're staying off YouTube. So the second type of increase that agencies can experience, and we did experience after two thousand eleven, is, is just a rash of claims. Uh, in two thousand eleven, we had a lot of claims associated with the flood. And so you can see the city second from the bottom there represents twenty eight percent of AMBAJA's overall claims. And that's when, um, that's when you got to pay attention and figure out what's going on. And we've seen that over my tenure on AMBAJA, sort of claims histories move around from city to city. Sometimes they're associated with police departments that are having issues. Sometimes they're associated with sewer issues, um, those kinds of things. And they're always, it's a different answer about what's going on and whether it's just bad luck or whether it's management issues that can be corrected. Next slide, please. On the work comp budget, we share, um, so work comp is insurance that we buy to cover the costs associated with, uh, injuries in the workplace. Those costs are twenty five percent payroll and seventy five percent experience. So we're heavily weighed experiencing in AMBAJA. And again, on payroll, we do payroll a little bit different on work comp than we do on liability, which I don't totally know why, where it's eleven point three percent of the overall payroll, which is constant. And we are about five point six of the AMBAJA work comp claims, which that number moves around. Um, interestingly, Capitola has historically been low on work comp, um, which is a good thing. Uh, so you'll see that we are half basically of our expected work comp claims history. And overall work comp claims increased eleven percent primarily due to medical costs. And our premium this year only increased four percent because our his, our claims history got even a little bit better from where it was before. And then next slide. This is, sorry, the numbers are teeny here. This is again how we look at kind of the work comp budget, the claims history. You can see our total there is five point six percent of the total incurred losses over the period of time. Uh, and that's how we come up with that portion of the budget. So that, I think, concludes the AMBAJA budget review and online sales tax. And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to pause, I can answer questions or we can keep forging ahead.
Let's see if there's any questions at this point, Jamie. Do council members have questions? Yes, council member, perchance.
Yeah, um, do we look at our AMBAJA costs and, uh, excuse me, our experience, sorry, and internally try to manage that better during effort, city, city, um, management side effort on that? Yes, simple answer is yes. Um, we, we have programs at AMBAJA that help cities reduce liability. And so we actually rolled out a program that our public works department is working on right now, where we have an overall contractor who's doing sidewalk assessments and grinding for all the member cities, um, to try to reduce trip and fall liability. Um, and I'm always monitoring, we're always monitoring the claims. And if we see patterns to the claims, we'll investigate. I will share with you one story where King City, you may remember from the news, maybe seven or eight years ago, had a terrible problem with their police department. Um, there was a federal investigation, I think a number, a number of officers, and I believe the police chief were caught up in a, a, a system where cars were being taken, um, from residents. And we saw some huge claims coming out of King City Police Department. And actually, we ended up at AMBAJA as a board, basically putting them on probation and saying unless you make these following corrections to your police department, we're going to stop, we're going to kick you out. You're not going to be insured anymore. So both at a local management level and at the AMBAJA board level, we are actively monitoring. And when cities run into trouble, there's often conversations about what, what needs to be done to fix it.
Yeah, I thank you for that. I'm glad you're involved in that on both levels.
Great, thank you.
Any other council members have questions? Okay, none, why don't you go ahead, Jenny?
So, um, we're going to move on to the early childhood and youth program fund. The, um, these are restricted funds, as, as you're all well aware, that, um, can only be used for early childhood and youth programming. There's currently an ad hoc community grant, um, committee that recently reviewed potential uses. And I believe is recommending, um, utilizing the reoccurring E C Y P, such finding, net funding of sixty one thousand for our community grant program. And then utilizing the fifty one thousand of flood balance in our recreation division. Um, so we, that'll come back towards the end of that to get some council direction on those two, two items. And then just as a reminder, that community grant strategic plan will be considered, um, next week at the city council meeting. I think, um, I saw Nikki is on the call. I think for these next few bullet points, I'm going to, um, have her go through those because she's way more well versed on these than I am.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, mayor, council members. Um, I'm here to talk about the recreation division proposals for the E C Y P fund. Before I dive in though, um, I don't want to forget that council in our last meeting had also requested, um, an update on recreation meetings with the library around programming. And I wanted to let you know that, um, the library and I have been in communication. Um, but we've had trouble scheduling, uh, in order to have that meeting. It is planned for next week and staff will return with an update when there's more information later. Um, so on to the recreation division proposal. Um, so currently recreation receives, uh, any level of scholarship fund that goes to youth from, uh, different organizations such as the, the school district or the community foundation. And all of those funds are restricted to specific programs such as, uh, junior guards or after school. Um, so staff's proposal for a large, the largest amount is to allocate, um, thirty nine thousand dollars for a scholarship fund for youth programming in a more general sense. Um, so this would be funds that would be available to anyone that would apply for, and, and new to recreation would be youth classes, um, through our class program. Uh, it would continue to have after school Camp Capitola, Junior Guards as well, um, but also would go towards any youth, um, Park R X, uh, requests that we might have. Um, with this current amount, uh, I, staff would anticipate that this would be about two years, slightly less than two years of complete funding based on our current activity of, of requests. Um, if there was no other source of funding. We do continually get funding from Capitola Community Foundation. Uh, we've yet to have a conversation with the school district as to whether or not they will continue funding, um, after school, um, even on a, on a different level than what they've done in the past due to the pandemic. Um, and, and another portion of, uh, this fund, staff would request, uh, a proposal to have ten thousand dollars allocated to a swim lesson equity program. Um, so currently, junior guards, um, in order to participate in the program, they need to know how to swim. They need to be, and have enough skill and confidence to be able to start a program, um, on the first day and get through the basic swim test appropriate for the age, um, in order to continue in the program. Um, and so staff is concerned about that barrier and would like to have a, a small amount of money in order to help, uh, under-resourced youth have access to swim lessons and help to break down, uh, a lot of the barriers that prevent those youth from getting to swim lessons. Um, staff intends to involve, uh, agency partners, uh, within the county in order to try and get this program up and running. And, um, a lot of this funding would go towards staff hours, school rental and any equipment that would be necessary to serve those youth. And then the final smaller dollar amount of two thousand dollars would be to provide some additional resources to recreation's current job skills programs. Uh, we currently offer two for teen youth in our community, our Capitola Junior Leaders, as well as our Capitola Junior Guard Captain Course. Um, both of these programs have parts of the program where they are shadowing staff and that they are, um, getting volunteer hours, working directly with youth. This funding would go towards, um, providing services, much like how, uh, staff currently provide, um, contracted services to train physical staff. So for example, we've had an ongoing partnership for positive discipline. Then they train staff, um, in order to have this resource and connection with youth that they work with. So this would help to extend those resources and our job skills, um, training program. And, um, with that, I am able to answer any questions or are you pleased to continue on with the, hi, Jim?
Council member perchance. Yeah, I'm muted.
Yeah, I'm mixing up programs. So you also had a program for a summer camp. Uh, is that going to be reported on later or is that just not part of this? I'm just trying to understand. The summer camp program, you know, you started last year.
Um, are you thinking about the family camp program?
The family camp, okay, not summer, the family camp during the summer, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it would have happened in the summer. Um, excuse me. Yeah, so the, the family camp program, um, we came upon some challenges in order to be able to operate. The first one that we had attempted to run did not hit the minimum number of enrollment. Um, and so we were not able to run that one. We did continue it in the budget, um, but with the staffing resource that recreation had in order to get it up and running, um, did not feel confident that it would, uh, be a successful program. Um, currently, it's not in this budget, but, um, I've had conversations with, um, staff in the city of Watsonville as well as the county. And we're going to, over the year, explore a partnership in order to attempt to bring this back as a little bit more of a countywide initiative. Um, but those conversations will need to happen.
Well, thank you, Nikki, for attempting, I mean, attempting that originally and then being there was some stumbling that you're trying to find another solution to that. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Questions from any other council members? Nikki had a question about the scholarships and the swim, uh, lesson equity. Uh, how many scholarships and how many swim lessons do you think you'd be able to provide for that amount of money?
Um, it's a great question. The, the challenging part about it is it's a little bit cart before the horse. Um, based on, um, some preliminary feasibility for this, I feel that we would be able to get, um, uh, a handful of youth from within the schools that are in Capitola or that serve Capitola, so like SoCal, Santa Cruz Gardens, Main Street. Um, I would need to identify if we would be transporting them to the pool. And so that's the, the limiting factor. If we were doing the transportation, which is a pretty strong barrier for individuals in order to learn to swim, um, then that would create a smaller number of individuals. If we are not providing the transportation, then that opens up the door to a significantly more. Um, we are also, I've been in conversation with SoCal High School pool and the county. The county is currently under construction, so there's not much of a conversation right now. Um, but SoCal High is definitely interested in, um, having that. Uh, but there's still a lot of steps that would need to happen as far as the rental cost, um, where we fall within their pace, uh, pay tier and that sort of thing. So, um, it is a, it's a moving target, but the feasibility, I feel like we could definitely get, um, a handful of kids. I would, I would shoot for twenty within this first year, but I would hope for more.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, then, oh, council member Brooke.
Thank you, mayor's story. Nikki, um, I, I guess I just have a comment about, uh, the, the scholarships. And what I'd, I'd like to see or encourage you to explore is the accessibility to the scholarships, meaning that we were so restricted in who we could give scholarships to prior, um, with the funding from the county, that, um, you know, when we look at what a thriving community is or a successful community, healthy community, that's when these kinds of services are free to everybody. And often, you know, of course I want us to serve those very low, low income families, but I would like to see that extended to the, um, you know, the median income families or even just everybody in our community. That would just be a goal that, um, would it be great for all kids, every kid in, in the city of Capitola to have these for free to them, no matter what household they come from. So, um, that's, that's the type dream, that's my big dream. But until then, with this type of funding, um, I would encourage you to, to open this up to, to many because we know what a level of the wage is now. And it's not the low, low income that we're seeing all families affected by, um, price increases for, for a lot of things. So, um, but thanks for everything you're doing, this all sounds great.
Yeah, um, so I think you'll be happy to hear that. So with, with our partnership with the county, that was a, a very unique circumstance. And the way that our scholarship program operates, um, we're not under those same restrictions. And the way that our scholarship program operates, um, we're not under those same restrictions. And so we currently work with the Capitola Foundation. Um, and they review our scholarship applications and provide scholarship on a percentage base. So we have individuals that are currently enrolled in our after-school program or in or will be entering into Camp and Junior Guards who have received a twenty-five percent scholarship, they've received a fifty percent scholarship, or if their economic um picture warranted, they would have received a hundred percent scholarship minus a um registration fee that is a small nominal fee. So, um, we're we're very excited about that partnership uh with them as they review our scholarship applications and it has served us well for a couple of years now.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I have just a couple more slides on additional items before we get into the uh capital improvement program. So at the uh May fourth meeting, um, there was a request to provide a, I guess, a a clearer picture, a cleaner calculation of how we come up with the reserve fund. It was kind of all rolled up into one line item. So, um, our reserve fund targets for the contingency and emergency reserves are a percentage of general fund expenditures, but do not include internal service charges or transfers. So those um expenditures include personnel, contract services, training and memberships, supplies, and grants. And you can see um across the top there by fiscal year what those amounts were. So just going left to right in fiscal year nineteen twenty, those total expenditures were thirteen million three sixty-two. So for the contingency reserve, the fifteen percent target was two million, just slightly over two million. We were at two million sixty-one, so we were fifty-seven thousand dollars. The end of the year, fifty-seven thousand dollars above our target. And then kind of the same calculation for the emergency reserve of only at ten percent. Um, so the target was one million three thirty-six, we were at one million three seventy-four, thirty-seven thousand over. For this fiscal year, the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three, um, we have added some of the council goals. I think I want to say it's around six fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars in kind of general fund expenditures, which is causing our um reserve target to kind of creep up above where it would be next year. And then, so what we did was we looked at what was the target at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four and kind of made level contributions this year and next year to make sure that we're on target by next year rather than put a bunch of funding in this year to pull it back out next year. And then the last item I have um is a Measure F summary. So, um, Measure F went into effect January first of twenty eighteen, and you can see um across the top, I have fiscal years seventeen, eighteen across, so this fiscal year revenues, um, what we budgeted, and then what we actually received across the top. So through fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we had budgeted two point six million, received about two point five million, so we were about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars below what our um budget was. But um we don't spend, so so that's kind of on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we program, we budget basically every dollar that is in the budget, but we spend more in line with what actually comes in the door. So you can see um by fiscal year what we've budgeted and uh what we've spent each year. The first three projects, the Ward, Jetty, and Bloom are multi-year projects. Um, Jetty and Bloom are complete, came in under budget, so they're actually kind of returning some of that funding back into the Measure F pool, if you will. Um, the remaining things on the bottom there, the twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty ward repairs, the purchase of the beach loader and the Grand Avenue path repairs, were all one-time things. Um, that's why those budgets are are pretty much on on spot on. Grand Avenue path did return just about eight thousand dollars back into the Measure F pool. And then they, what that does is it just, uh, we adjust the um work budget based on on what the actuals are. So, um, I will do a true-up at the end of this fiscal year. I suspect that um we have a total budget since the inception, since Measure F started of just under four point six. I think we're going to be very close to that over the long haul and that we won't have many adjustments to make to this um to to be the work budget, basically. But this is something that the um back has also asked me to return with once, um, we have our final numbers for um Measure F receipts, which will be August. So I can, if there's any questions on those last two slides, we can take those right now or we can move on to the CIP budget.
Any questions from councilmembers? Jim, I, on the Measure F slide, um, for the year twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yes.
It shows separate um Measure F funds going to uh public safety, uh, but that isn't replicated in um any of the other fiscal years. Um, so was that, was that just a one-time uh expenditure for public safety?
Um, thank you for that question, Mayor. I I kind of glanced up and glazed over that. So, um, in response to the COVID pandemic of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we left all of Measure F in the general fund and applied it to operations. And that was basically to avoid layoffs, our biggest expensive personnel. If we had to make deeper cuts, if we had pulled Measure F out and had to make deeper cuts, it would have probably resulted in either greater um concessions from employees or actual layoffs. So that was the one year where we left that in the general fund to cover operations. I see, yeah. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, I'm going to move on to uh the CIP budget and turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Westburg.
Sorry about that. I'm Nelson Prokony. Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm proud to present our capital improvement program. Um, as we do typically, we'll review projects that are constructed or under construction and kind of go through what we're still working on and then our allocations um of this year's funding. So we have three projects, um, all reasonably large that are under construction right now uh in various phases. First is the uh traffic signal adaptive control project on Forty-first Avenue. Um, the budget there, you can see we have a seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar airborne grant, actually two grants, and a hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. Uh, that project is uh, the Capitol side of it is is complete and it's gathering data right now, so we can go to adaptive controls probably in the next couple of weeks. The Caltrans side has been delayed, it's just a matter of getting Caltrans uh to review and approve plans. They're they're working on it, um, and I anticipate that'll be done in in the next uh six weeks. Uh, Claris War Traffic Committee is currently out to bid. Uh, we have an estimated budget of one million one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. We have, as you can see there, a total funding of one point two four, one point two five million. So we have a little bit of cushion there, about ninety-four thousand dollars of cushion. Um, we're hopeful that we'll bids will come in lower than our projected estimate and provide us a a bigger cushion for that project. If we have a big enough cushion, we may look, try to add, uh, not necessarily to this project, but to the um project below, the pavement management project, which is uh, we've built in phases. Um, the phase one, the city completed, and we did dig outs and pavement repairs throughout the roads that are getting worked on. And then we partnered with the county to do the roads resurfacing. That project is beginning uh early in June, I'll put it beginning June first or the week of June sixth. Um, it's all over the county, the work in in Capitola is part of that. They haven't given us a final schedule, but certainly uh early in June to the end of June, we should be seeing work on in Capitola like that. The total funding for that project is six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We have a current projected cost of just under five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have about forty-three, forty-two, forty-three thousand dollar um balance. As you know, from previous dating projects, it's always difficult to exactly nail down the quantities that will be used on a project with here that, um, we feel comfortable that that contingency will allow us to complete the project without adding additional funding if we thought, uh, when we get to the end. Next slide, Jim. So these are the projects that have been funded in previous years that are currently underway, some have been on the books for a while and some we're we're working on uh seriously and getting very close to putting out to bid. First is the Monterey Park Avenue um pedestrian pathway. This is the pathway that goes from the upper parking lot here behind City Hall up to Monterey and Park Avenue. Um, we've been through very um multiple design efforts on this. Uh, we're trying to coordinate uh with what the county is designing for segment eleven of a trail, rail trail, whatever you want to call it, um, and where they're starting and stopping and how we can interface with that. Um, I think it, six weeks ago, we went before, came before council and recommended that we look at a new route because basically it follows the roadway behind the curb. That'll take us out of any any work that the county is doing on the rail, uh, the rail corridor and allow us to proceed uh quicker. All the designs have impacts on oak trees. Um, our our design engineer is working right now in the redesign to try and minimize those impacts to the oak trees. We anticipate having a preliminary design from him probably in the next three to four weeks. Um, if we do go sidewalk, we do anticipate the funding that we have of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be sufficient. Um, if we get into a lot of retaining laws or other work, we may need additional funding, but we won't know that till we finish the design that's acceptable to the council. Kristen Park is what we're working on the hardest right now to try and get it out to bid. We're in final design, you know, we've had a lot of workshops on this and a lot of design drawing soon, um, having those and and what you put out to bid are always a little different in the specifications. So I know my staff and my drone owner are working on that very hard. We hope to get that out to bid in the next month. Uh, based on our estimates, the uh, we do have sufficient funding. Not have a large contingency there, but we do have, um, we have to, we're hoping, we uh, I mean, under budget on that. Next project's probably one that uh, it's it's a, well, it's a reach. Uh, we have funding right now to do public outreach on the roundabout of Bank Capitola Avenue. We have not started that work, uh, because in order to do, we need to complete the project under it, which is the utility undergrounding. PG&E is working on this project. Um, it's been difficult to coordinate that project with them. They uh work and sits and sits and sits and stop and go. So we had a meeting maybe six weeks ago with Caltrans and we kind of uh expressed our frustrations with the project. Uh, that seems to have gotten them going again. Uh, we did get some preliminary design plan finally just this week, um, but they're needing to finish up and figure out what the final cost estimate is. They are kind of telling us that they don't think there's sufficient funding um in our Rule Twenty A money to build the project. Um, there's, I think, about two point one million dollars in that fund, uh, the PG&E Health Fund. Uh, but they're saying we could be off by as much as a million dollars. Um, and we keep asking them why, what's wrong, how to get here, and um, that's where we're having troubles communicating with them. But anyway, we will end up with a deal estimate, not a PG&E estimate, probably in the next month. Uh, once we have that, um, we'll have to make some decisions. Maybe there'll be easy decisions, maybe there'll be hard decisions, we don't know. Um, but we'll keep the council informed on that. So getting back to the roundabout, um, until we know what we're doing with the undergrounding, we're not proceeding with any public outreach. I don't want to expect any expectations that the, in a roundabout, it's feasible in the next short period if we're still trying to negotiate with PG&E. Uh, next project is Emergency Power at City Hall. We're trying to get proposals with all these problems getting things made these days. There's a shortage of just about everything. Um, we have a request for proposals out, we're trying to get responses, um, still working with that. This project has been continued by Cal OES, has provided the funding um for three hundred thousand dollars because of the problems with getting delivery and parts on these types of projects. Um, if all goes well, we would have it built by the end of this calendar year. And finally, it's the War Project. Um, as you know, it's uh another project we're hoping to get out to bid. We plan on getting it out to bid this summer. Um, this is the summary of the existing funding that's in the project. We also added additional funding uh in the mid-year review, I think that was what it was. Um, that we'll show on the next slide. But the the takeaway from this, that shows the Measure F we have about two, two point two million dollars, grants and other, we have about three point seven million dollars. We, right now, we have about five point nine million dollars. We had expended close to one point two million. So the four million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars is what we have, what we're carrying forward as we work on the project. And that'll show up in the next slide, Jim. Thank you. So these are the appropriations from this year's funding. A lot of it was taken at the, when we reviewed the mid-year or or did the council, that's what, excuse me, when we did the council goals and we allocated uh funding that was available at that time. The first project on the list is the City Park uh Universal Design Project that was originally identified for uh the library, but I think uh councilman um Brooks asked to move it to Jade Street. I've kind of left it on designated here, but um, I certainly, I I agree with that, the project does current that makes no sense to do this. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund Measure F money in there. Um, that project, I'm going to give a, when we finish these slides, uh, kind of a quick snapshot of what the universal design is for a park. Um, we are also met with the county parks, friends of county parks, who uh did fundraising for the park on um Shanticleer. They've indicated a willingness and an interest in helping us raise money for our park improvements at Jade Street Park. So once we kind of know what our funding level is and confirm what we're going at Jade Street Park, we will formalize an agreement with them, bring that to council, and kind of kick this project off. Next project that received funding um during the council goals was the Stockton Avenue Bridge Protection Project. This is uh, as we're talking about flooding is is probably the primary issue, it's resection on the the uh stations that come into the creek, the or the piers that come into the creek. We completed a study oh, three or four years ago about best uh ways to address that. Obviously, the best way would be to replace the bridge without any in-mitspan piers. The cost of that and the impacts to that are are huge, so we've kind of deferred that solution. We came up with a solution to put some uh protection on the upstream end that would deflect the trees that are coming down and hopefully prevent them from being caught. About a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Um, this, when this budget's approved, we'll kind of figure out the best way to move forward. We're also looking at potentially if that, we need additional funding, there are grants seem to be plenty of grants out right now to address flooding or sea level rise issues, and we may be looking at that once we kind of get a a better firm idea of what the final cost may be. That project's going to take a while, as you can imagine, building in the creek. Um, it's going to involve quite a few permits, uh, resource agency permits. Um, I anticipate going through the environmental review. Right now, I would I would estimate that's probably a three-year project to complete. City Hall maintenance, the next two, City Hall maintenance and the community center maintenance are both uh figures to try and uh un- unidentified work right now, although uh the community center, we have a better idea what we want to do, so just make repairs that have been long outstanding and we've been kind of waiting to try and figure out what we want to do with both City Hall and the community center before we invest large amounts of money. But at this point, we feel we need to do uh some repair work just to keep the building open and operational. So we'll be working on that. Uh, obviously, as we move forward with some of the other ideas going through on the community center, um, this money will be available for seed money if we go for a larger project. Finally, going back to the Capitol War Improvements, during the goal-setting session, we did allocate another one point five million dollars to the project. Um, some of that, I think four hundred thousand of that was general fund and one point one million was Measure F. So adding that funding to the four million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars we have. So adding that funding to the four million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars we have gives us six hundred and twenty-two, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars, six million, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the project. Right now, our construction estimate is seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe it's about seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars short. That's of a full project. I, I want to stress that we have a six million dollar project that we can put out to bid and that's actually what we're working on completing the plan for right now. Um, the larger projects include, uh, redoing the floating docks and installing the bathrooms. Those can certainly be done as a later project. There are in fact different contractors that will probably do them if we put them up together. Um, if funding's added, we, it's possible we could change order of this. As you all are aware, we have a three and a half million dollar ask in Senator Panetta's office. Um, sorry, Congressman Panetta's office. And, uh, we should know about that. Um, their budgets are approved in September. And I think we would know sometime probably in August whether that's going to be successful. Um, so what I'm proposing is we move forward with the six million dollar project now, get that out to bid, get some pro, get that project rolling. It's going to take, you know, nine months to build this. We're going to have the closed wharf during that time. If we can start doing that over winter, uh, rather than next summer, that would be best. And the final project here is the pavement management for next year moving forward. Um, the resources we have for that right now is Measure D, uh, and State Senate Bill One, have about five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. I know we had said we'd be talking about streets at this meeting, but I apologize. We are planning to come forward with a poll payment management report. We did a restudy, reevaluated all the roads and that consultant is also working up a draft five-year plan. And that'll be coming to the council on June ninth. So at that point, we can talk about what streets they're recommending, streets you guys would like to see, um, brought into the program. I will say that when we, um, applied for a grant with the R T, with the, uh, with the R T C, um, back, uh, three months ago, we did indicate we wanted a project on Forty First. We were received a half a million dollars, which is part of the Sinclair's project. And the other, the other part will address the intersection Forty First Capital Road. But at that time, we also pledged as match money, next year's, uh, Measure D and S B one. Um, we're unclear, we're trying to work with the R T C if we don't spend all that on those two intersections, if we can use that on other projects. And I anticipate we will. So we'll have that information when we report on June ninth. So going to the next slide, I just wanted to talk about inclusive park design or universal design. The, um, universal design that's kind of learned is a term used, uh, by architects, uh, for not just parks, but all public spaces that opens them up to everybody. When I've looked at individual parks, they call it inclusive park design. So I've stuck with the inclusive park design at this point, uh, as we move forward since all the play, play equipment is identified as inclusive. So inclusive park design is really taking apart beyond the A D A requirements and making it open and easily accessible by everyone of all abilities. Um, A D A, I mean, Jade Street right now meets A D A requirements. It has a sloped ramp down to the woodchips. Um, it has some features that can be used. But as you know, a wheelchair or something, or somebody on crutches trying to work on those woodchips, um, is difficult. So it's not really as inclusive as we would like. So the inclusive design, um, is designed to have multiple play experiences, developing motor skills, physical skills and cognitive skills. So it's more than just swings and a slide and, you know, climbing structure. It's all sorts of different elements that are easily accessible. It's designed for all children, um, and graduated ranges. You said when we talked about children, these types of parks are from three to twelve years old. Um, it has different play areas and different play structures or elements and organized areas so that, you know, you find your, your level of what you want to do that day, you can stay in that area. Probably the biggest thing is improved accessibility. It does require the rubber matting like we have at the top line of the library, that it replaces the chips. That is a much better, uh, pathway and much easier to, to walk around, um, and get around. So, and it's completely level so that there's no transitions or gradual transitions only. It also includes safe areas. Um, not all kids are comfortable playing and being loud and, and playing hard. So it does include quiet, safe areas where children can find their own space and do, uh, whatever they want. And it's also becoming special, uh, welcoming social areas. So children can play alone, they can mimic what they've seen other people do by watching them, or they can play in groups. So if we look at the next slide, this is Leo's Haven, which, um, I think is the first open park in, uh, in, uh, Santa Cruz. It's on Shanticleer. So I'll start with the, the walking surface. The greens, the light brown, the dark brown areas are all the rubberized matte material and they're all level. So you can get around this park, um, easily. It's all level, it's all e- easily accessible. And then you can notice all the different elements around it. Yes, there's a, a big claim structure, but as you see on the left-hand side, there's a, a ramp up to it, which allows people with difficulties in mobility getting there without having to climb the steps or anything like that. That ramp continues so that they can access supply potentially or different play areas. But beyond the, the large play structure, there's the swing, different types of swings depending on your ability and your age. Uh, you can swing on them. There's a tractor here on the right-hand side that you can go climb around. And one of the biggest things is there's a fence all the way around it, um, just for protection. So parents feel safe taking that consider. So it's really a park designed for everybody to use, um, with lots of support and praise for the Leo's Haven. There's several other, um, parks like it that are around in different areas, but I thought this was the best one since it's close to us. So I think that's my last slide. I'd be happy to answer any questions I can at this time.
What's the number, Brad?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Steve. I was wondering, uh, in regard to the City Hall maintenance, um, do we know at this point how that money will be allocated to different projects? Or if this will be decided at staff level or council level? Or if it'll be one big project or a bunch of little ones? Is there any, um, insight as to that yet?
Our biggest goal and we're hoping to take care of it through the, uh, solar projects on the roof is to take care of the, the roof here. If we, if we need anything, we need a roof that doesn't leak every time it rains. Um, besides that, I don't think there's any specific allocations. I know in the past we talked about re-carpeting, we talked about painting, um, and make potentially remodeling the bathrooms downstairs. Um, but certainly as we move forward, we will, Alex, we will, the council will have the final say on where that money is spent.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. We, um, we received, uh, an email from a former council member, Stephanie Harland, who had asked about the bathrooms, the floors in the bathroom. And I know that that's something that even she was concerned with when she was on council. And of course, it's, um, one of our public space, you know, public areas that members of the public will go into and kind of get a, um, a feel of our, our city's facilities. So it, it probably.
They've got an idea that we do what we can to.
That, uh, looking as, as nice as we can. Do we have an, uh, idea of how much the roof might cost? I have no idea how much it costs to replace, replace the roof.
The, the roof, the flat part of the roof is about fifty thousand dollars, but we, I think most will leak through tapping on the mancers. And so what I'm hoping is we can take care of the flat part with the solar project and then have the mancers, which I think will be about twenty to thirty thousand dollars. But that's an estimate on my part.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's all I can, uh, expect. Okay, perfect. And you said pavement management, we're going to go into detail on all the, the roads and whatnot on, on the night, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, great, thanks so much, Steve.
What's the number, Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Story, thank you, Steve. Um, so at our last meeting, we talked about, or I, I suggested we increase the City Park Universal Design Project, um, to three hundred. And we were waiting to see what information you would bring forward. And one of the kind of basic things that Friends of Parks, I always say it wrong, Santa Cruz Parks and Friends, um, suggested was the quick fix with the squishy stuff. Were you able to figure out how much that would cost to, to do if, you know, if we did do the basics? And let's say this partnership and this fundraising effort wasn't enough, um, and we just wanted to do that one piece? Should it, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, I estimate that'd be about two hundred and sixty to three hundred thousand dollars just to remove all the chips that are there and put some, put in that rubber matting that's there. We've actually got two proposals on that, so I'm pretty comfortable with that price. But I, I just, I think you know, um, if we're going to put new equipment in there, then we, we want to wait.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that was my hope is that if, and I know this is one of the concerns of our mayor, you know, um, if we just did the basic, which was the squishy, we would need more. Um, and then should the partnership and the fundraising efforts go really well, then we can see it look like a potential Leo's Haven. But if it doesn't, I really would like council to support just the basic funding for, um, squishy stuff because that does alleviate, I wish I knew what the squishy stuff was called, but, um, but it would alleviate a lot of those problems of children having access with wheelchairs or, you know, whatever, um, they need to get to the play area. Um, okay, great. Uh, I, I actually don't know, so this is a question maybe for Jamie, um, about next steps to requesting something like that or getting the buy-in from council. What would be the best way to go about asking for that? Because I know it's a direction tonight.
Yeah, so what we'd be looking for this evening is if council does, we're going to get all the way through the presentation or we had kind of the key points. But it would ultimately be a motion about, uh, directing staff of where to either make changes or allocate funding in this year's budget.
Okay, so wouldn't require a formal motion? Um, we would do that formally in June for the final budget?
I think if you were going to be making direction, uh, on the budget, I think we would like a motion this evening. Um, but I think we do have a spot for that sort of here at the end of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Um, Steve, um, I had, I had a question and this is actually about a prior, um, Capitol improvement project, um, the library. Um, and, and it's, and it's related to, uh, our current budget. And I was noticing in our library, uh, uh, page, um, page one oh two of the budget that, um, and of course, we had our seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar, um, fund balance leftover from that project. And, um, it's, and it appears from the budget, uh, that it, um, that the fund balance is just being maintained in the library reserve. Um, and, um, but, and I was one, wondering why that is. And, um, because I thought that excess money was going to come back to the general fund at some point. But are there future needs for the library that this is being held for?
I'm going to ask, uh, if I can ask Director Mulberg to answer that because I was under the impression that it was being reallocated.
You are correct, Steve, it has been reallocated. Um, that's a good catch. I need to get that money out of the, um, library fund and returned back to the general fund. That was part of the city council goals. We had that money included when we allocated the three point five million.
So we've already sent it.
It's been, um, allocated. I'd have to go back to the budget goals and say it was kind of put into that big pot of money, if you will, and then reallocated to city council goals. I just need to move it out of the fund and back over to the general fund. But it is being counted in, um, what we're doing this year.
In projects that we've already, uh, I did it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, um. Are there, are there other questions that this? Um, and I'm also, I mean, just, I'm noticing that we have no attendees this evening and Larry just confirmed there. There are no emails?
Um, Mayor Story, we, nope, we have not received any emails on the site.
Okay, so, um, I'll check again before we conclude, uh, this evening. But, um, why don't we go ahead with the, um, uh, staff presentation then?
Okay, I just have a, a few more slides to go over. So, um, I wanted to touch on the equipment replacement fund. We didn't really talk about this, um, during May, May fourth and actually didn't bring it up much, um, with the fact the other day. But, um, just to kind of recap our equipment replacement fund, because we have a lot of activity. We're, we're estimating that we're going to start the year with about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. Part of that is, um, a lot of that is the buildup for the electric street sweeper. Uh, we're also going to contribute another hundred and five thousand dollars, um, in I S F charges to the department's purchasing equipment this year. And then, um, we, as you all know, we received the, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Three C E for the electric street sweeper. So, um, as far as pur- proposed purchases for this year, the total's one oh five, which ties that to that I S F revenue charge. And they include, um, a new lifeguard tower, a, uh, new recycle in the police department and a traffic speed sign, one of the solar traffic speed signs. Um, we do have a couple of things remaining from twenty-one, twenty-two, the street sweeper that we talked about. Um, I believe that we have placed an order for that, but it's probably nine to twelve months out. And then, uh, we had a public works truck, three-quarter ton truck with a dump bed approved last year that because of, um, supply chain issues, we haven't even been able to order yet. So that one's still kind of hanging out there. But assuming we did all of these purchases, um, we would still end, uh, the year with an estimated fund balance just under four hundred and nine thousand of the equipment replacements, replacement fund. Um, a couple of remaining follow-up items. Actually, Mickey already touched on the first one. Uh, there was a, a question about the reprogramming at the library and she mentioned, um, she's in her staffer meeting with library staff on May twenty-sixth. There was also a request for the local business groups to provide a report on their use of restricted T O T. Um, the B I A will bring their resolution of intent to levy assessments along with their annual report to the June ninth council meeting. And I'm working with them to, um, kind of elaborate a little bit more within their annual report on how restricted T O T funds are used. Uh, we've also reached out to the chamber and we're attempting to have them provide an update at the same meeting. So it's kind of a nice little, they're, they're on the same meeting and it kind of flows together with what they're doing with restricted T O T. So hopefully that those both happen on June ninth. As far as next steps, um, we, obviously we have a budget hearing this evening. Our next budget hearing is scheduled for June first, if we need it. Um, we have a regular scheduled meeting on June ninth. The S A C has a special meeting, how, uh, scheduled for June fourteenth, if we need it. And we have a final fourth budget hearing, um, if we need it, for June sixteenth with the intent of bringing the budget for adoption to city council at June twenty-third. Um, we were pushing a little bit for June ninth if possible, but I think we need to hear from the B I A and their budget before we can adopt our budget. So we're still targeting June twenty-third. And then the slide that Jamie was alluding to earlier to kind of tie all this together is recommendations. So our recommendations this evening is to receive the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget and identify any additional questions, um, that we have that we can either answer tonight or, or at a future budget hearing. And then to provide direction to staff on the proposed budget. Um, on the first part is funding for the E C Y P community grant and our recreation programs. And we're looking for input on both the ongoing revenue of sixty-one thousand as well as the fifty-one thousand fund balance. And then I have listed here maintaining one point three million general fund balance. If there is a desire to add funding to either the, um, universal design play structure or any other project, this is probably where we would pull it from. Um, and then the final recommendation is either to continue budget deliberation to June first or cancel remaining, remaining budget hearings and direct staff to prepare a final budget for consideration on June twenty-third. And with that, we are open for questions and discussion.
Jim, on, on that, uh, last point, um, on that slide about continuing the budget deliberation, uh, to June first, I, I, in Steve's report, he mentioned that we were going to be, um, be presented with a more detailed pavement management program, um, that are meeting on, I believe he said June ninth. be presented with a more detailed payment management program, um, that are meeting on, I believe he said, June ninth. Um, and so I just, does, um, that management program, um, should we wait before concluding the budget until we, um, hear that? The details of that, or?
I don't believe we need to wait, uh. The funding that we're using for payment management, measure D and, uh, SB one or RMRA are, are restricted to street projects. So whether it's payment management or some other kind of street project, um, that, that, that's fine. If we were going to, um, so, that's revenue coming in. If we were going to do payment management, I'm assuming Steve would come back, um, following the June ninth meeting with a detailed plan on, on which payment management streets we're going to, to hit up for twenty-two, twenty-three. But I think as far as, um, adopting the budget, whether it goes to payment management, those are in restricted funds, and we can do that after the fact. They're not go- getting commended with the general fund at all.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks for that clarification. Um, so, uh, yeah, council member Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Story. Um, I would like to take this as an opportunity to request that, um, I, I, well, I should first say that I am in agreement with all of the recommendations as presented with, uh, um, with one change that I, I, uh, would ask for council's approval on, which is an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, from the one point three million general fund balance to add to the, uh, the park project. And that's to, um, to simply just do the basic spongy, uh, ground for the park structure there, um, which I think is necessary. So a hundred and twenty-five should be a good starting spot, um, and then that'll also allow for us to contract and partner with county parks and funds.
Yeah, council member, uh, Brown?
I did it, I was on mute. Am I still on mute? No, okay. Um, I was just wondering if we, I, I have concerns about some budget items that I don't know if we're gonna be able to determine tonight or in the next meeting. I know we like how much funding we might need to put for repairs for our community center. Um, and so I'm wondering if we don't move forward with, uh, Councilman Brooks' suggestion for an additional one twenty-five tonight, will there be another opportunity to do that? At any other meeting?
The simple answer is yes.
What's the not simple? Is there like a more detailed answer? I'm nervous that you're saying it that way.
No, the simple answer is yes, there will be more opportunities. Um, what we're hoping is, is I think, as was mentioned tonight, the, we're gonna find out about the federal funding for the Wharf coming up here, we think, by August, um, hopefully sooner. Uh, that would give us a clearer picture of whether there's a shortfall in the Wharf.
Okay.
And as you know, we're working on a new lease for the community center with the school district, and once that's hammered out, I think we have a clear picture about kind of when and what improvements we might be making to the community center. So our hope is to narrow, get those things knocked out this summer, which time then I think we'd be in a great position to sort of talk about the fund balance. Um, but yes, we will have an opportunity to do that, whether it comes up in August or September or it's October, November, I can't, I can't say for sure right now.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I love the idea of this inclusive park, and I, I would like to put more money towards it, but I'm not prepared to do that tonight, because I just wanna make sure that we are in a good situation to ensure that the other projects that we can't quite determine yet, if we're gonna be able to cover, um, that we'll be able to get, get all of those things squared away first.
Jamie, just to clarify though, what, I mean, we would need to, um, take action on this budget by June first.
So to be, to be clear, our recommendation is to adopt the budget. And what I was trying to suggest is that we can come back and talk about fund balance, allocations out of fund balance, whether it's for the Wharf, or park design, for the community center, um, hopefully late summer.
Okay, so we would need, whether it's tonight or June first, we would need to adopt the budget before we get the confirmation about those, uh, other events that will affect the fund balance.
That's correct, thank you for clarifying, yeah, that's the issue, is, is we, we, those things are gonna come after our deadline to adopt the budget. So that's why we're suggesting maybe keep some of the fund balance in your back pocket, because these other things are gonna be developing over the course of the summer.
Okay, good, thank you for that clarification. Uh, council member Bertrand?
Yeah, I have, um, rather small items that I'd like to request as a project for city council to consider. Um, first a question to Steve, though, this would involve you. Uh, how much does it cost to do a flashing light when a pedestrian wants to cross? And my concern is the, uh, senior housing area on Bay. There's a lot of people over the years that complained about that intersection at Bay and Hill. And most recently, I think all of us got an email on that. I certainly got a phone call on it recently, too. So how much is a flashing light thing, so especially the seniors could cross with safety?
For that intersection, we actually have pricing, and it's about eight thousand dollars. Um, we've actually allocated some, um, gap tax money, which, um, is a special, uh, reserve fund we have, or not a reserve fund, but a special revenue fund we have to purchase that equipment. So we'll probably be placing an order for that now, and there's, I mean, a need right now for more mon- money.
Okay, so you are budgeting already for that?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's all I'm concerned about at this point, thank you very much. Yeah, and I have no problem with the, um, the spongy stuff, whatever it's gonna be called. Let's do a research project, get the right day before we order.
Rubberized plate surface.
Okay, rubberized plate surface, okay. You know, if I was a kid and that was in my park, I would see how far I could jump and bounce. I would do all sorts of things like that.
Hey, are, uh, is there, um, further, uh, discussion on the, the other recommendations? And, and I, in the sense that we, um, get the funding for the ECYP community grant recreational program?
Mayor Story, did you want me to make that as a motion? Or the recommendation, I was still confused, Jamie, if you want me to approve the recommendations with the hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean, I could make, I can make that as a motion, is that what you're looking for?
I think that would be that, yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, recommendations presented with staff with an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the, towards the rubberized plate surface for our inclusive playground project.
Hold second.
And maybe then, uh, so we have a motion in the second, uh, regarding the additional hundred and twenty-five thousand for the, um, um, the RPS, um, surface of Jade Street. Um, and, um, before I, um, call for a vote on that, um, but I was noticing that the staff is also looking for direction on the, um, early childhood, uh, youth program funding. Um, is, am I correct on that?
I believe it's on the recommendations, um, listed. The funding for ECY community grant, sixty-one thousand towards revenue, and the fund balance goes to
Then, okay.
Parks and Rec.
So that was the recommendation from the subcommittee, and, and yeah, staff is recommending the subcommittee's recommendation, so sixty-one thousand dollars to the community grant program, fifty-one thousand for rec, and we have some, um, Nikki outlined some proposed uses for those funds. So if that looks good, staff, you know, please include that in the motion.
And also seems to me to prepare a budget, too, for the twenty-third.
Yeah, I, well, I think we're gonna, we're gonna come to that, um,
Okay.
in a minute, whether or not we're gonna conclude tonight or, or move on, uh, to the June first meeting. But I'll, uh, I'll, I'll call on council member Brown.
Thank you, I just have a, a question and then possibly a request, um, if it would make sense, or maybe an opposite order, but, um, I am in favor of all of these recommendations, and as I mentioned, I'm really nervous about continuing to allocate more funding from the fund balance right now towards other projects, um, that we already have funding allocated towards, frankly, um, that, when we are trying to determine some other projects. So would it make sense, and if so, would the maker of the motion be willing to separate this into two different motions? Because I would really not wanna have to say, you know, vote no on all of these recommendations that I approved, um, if it's all rolled into one. Would it be appropriate, would it make sense, and is that something that the, um, maker of the motion would, would agree to?
Absolutely, um, and I, I, I just also wanna be sure that I'm reading that we have one point three million in general fund balance. That is what I'm seeing here, and that hundred and twenty-five would be coming from that general fund balance. Okay, um, all right, so I'll go ahead and, um, and withdraw my current, um, motion that's on the table, Chloe, and I will make a new motion, and I'll, um, to, for, um, well, we'll start with the recommendations, and then once that passes, I'll make the second motion for, um, to utilize that general fund balance. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward with the staff recommendations, um, as presented on our, uh, slide here, um, including the direction proposed by E- for the ECYP community grant and our, and recreation programs as Nikki presented.
Hold second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, and, uh, before I call for a roll call vote on that motion, um, Larry, just wanna confirm that you have not received any emails, but, because you know, attendee.
They're sure we have not received any emails.
Okay, let's go ahead then with our roll call vote on the motion on the floor.
Okay, council member Bertrand?
I approve.
Council member Brooks?
Aye.
Council member Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Uh, council member Brooks, you wanna go on to your next motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to allocate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from our, um, one point three million dollar general fund balance to increase the, um, to go toward, excuse me, the inclusive park project, um, as presented in our twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget.
There's second.
I can say that.
Right, that's seconded by, uh, Vice Mayor Kaiser. Um, just a, a question to the city manager, um, um, Jamie, if we were to allocate this, additional money, would this be added in with the other pool of money that's, um, being directed toward the community center?
So my recollection is, is that there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated towards, originally towards the top lot, and then based on feedback at the last meeting, we renamed that to a universal play structure design. So my understanding, based on the motion, is that there'd be a hundred and fifty plus a hundred and twenty-five, that would give us two seventy-five for play structure work at Jade Street to kick off, uh, presumably a partnership to fundraise for a larger inclusive design for the play structure renovation.
So this, um, this funding is separate, uh, and apart from the monies that we had to go to, to the community center, uh, for capital improvement at that location?
Yes, that's my understa- that's the way we have it structured right now, is that then there's a separate pot of one fifty that is set aside for the community center. You recall that there's estimates that the community center needs probably around a million dollars of improvements, maybe seven hundred K worth of infrastructure, and then maybe three to four hundred thousand dollars of more functional improvements for the building.
Right, but, uh, the playground, um, sorry for belaboring this, but the playground expenditures, uh, cannot be, um, in, to the larger community center? And, uh, are, you know, projects or allocations?
So staff's understanding of so past council direction is that they're separate projects. So there's a community center project we've identified, and then effectively a play structure project that we've identified. We could change that should the council want us to, but that's the way we structured it so far.
Or, or if I may, Mayor Story, that let's say we fundraise enough money to cover everything. Of course, that's general fund money, no matter what, and we can reallocate that to any project, including the community center or anything else. Um, but the way our priorities read today is that there are two separate projects, each one with a hundred and fifty of them today.
Yeah, I'm getting some, um, verbal feedback, um, from somewhere there, I'm not quite sure who. Uh, but I, I, I guess what I'm trying to get to, you know, um, if the, under the community center, we're subject to a lease, um, and, and, uh, which are, is being negotiated, but, um, if the lease terminates, I'm assuming that the top lot, or the, the children's playground would be a part of that lease termination, and we would lose access, our possession of that, uh, playground. Um, and so, and if that's true, it seems to me that we should maybe think of making this expenditure incorporated into our lease negotiation.
So you're, you're absolutely correct that we are in negotiations with the district about a lease extension, and that, obviously, the play structure is included in those negotiations. Um, how we include, you know, this, obviously, real property negotiations that we do in closed session. Um, but, but I can tell you that staff has, is aware of the, the plans for a play structure, and has been taking that into account in our conversations with the district. Um, but you are absolutely correct that if there is no new lease, in twenty thirty-two, the city's rights to occupy and, and use the park expire, absent a new lease.
Yeah. Okay, I won't belabor this point. Um, but yeah, if, if, I think that if we're putting this additional amount of money and into, uh, that particular project, we should probably be sure to get credit for it and to preserve that value, um, if the lease should become terminated, so. Um, but I'll, I'll, um, I'll, won't belabor that point any longer. And if there's any other, um, any other questions on the motion on the floor, seeing none, I'll ask Chloe to take a roll call vote.
Okay. I just feel like I wanna clarify, I apologize. This is for the motion to allocate a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the general fund balance towards an inclusive park project at the community center, correct? Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Council member Bertrand?
Agreed.
Council member Brooks?
Aye.
Council member Brown?
No.
Vice Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
And I'll vote aye, uh, the motion passes four to one. Um, so, and I think our last order of business in here is to decide whether or not we're going to adopt this budget or continue this item until June first.
And as one point of clarification, you actually don't have the materials in front of you this evening to adopt, but if this is the final, if you're ready for us to adopt, then we would bring back the materials on a regular meeting, and we should cancel the remaining budget hearings.
Correct, yes. No, I mean, I think, um, conceptually, the budget would be approved, and No, I mean, I think, um, conceptually, the budget would be approved, and it would just be a matter of, we would have one final, um, I guess, look at it on a regular meeting on June twenty-third.
Correct.
Um, yeah, council member Seven, you talked about the, um, uh, just, there's just one budget here in June the first.
Mayor Story, I just have a question
Yeah.
For clarity.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I just saw your hand, that's council member
No, it's okay. I just wanna make sure that any of the decisions we make, um, for, regarding the CIP projects and things like that, um, won't affect or the decision of us saying that we'll go to the final budget for June twenty-third. I'm just trying to see if those moving parts all interconnect, or do we need more conversation about that? Um, just in case we wanna allocate the one million dollars to fixing Clear Street or something like that.
So I think the simple answer is, is that you'd be fine
Simple answer.
Simple, I'm sorry.
Even the simple answers tonight, Jamie.
I know, I know, I'm not sure where this is coming from. Um, so, so we're gonna basically, if you give us the direction tonight, we have, have effectively a budget package, and you will still have, I think it's one point one seven five million dollars of remaining fund balance. Then we're gonna be getting the presentation at our next meeting about the pavement management report, and you, obviously, in this budget, as Steve alluded to, we have a bunch of restricted road funds to allocate to different projects, and council could at that point say, you know, let's throw another couple hundred thousand dollars into road projects once you see what the list looks like. So I think you're, you're totally fine at this point, giving us direction to adopt, uh, to prepare the documents to adopt the budget, and then we'll be taking a look at the road projects coming up here in June.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, here's, um, with the council's will, we'd assume that, yeah, we would have, have to, need to have a formal motion if we were going to, um, adopt the budget tonight and counsel the, um, budget deliberations on June the first. Okay, um, yeah.
I, I guess, so are we, is everybody okay with skipping the next budget, or do we wanna revisit on June first with a more direct conversation?
Uh, I believe if we're going to, um, skip June first, we would need to adopt the budget tonight. If we don't, no?
No. We
No, you, you would give us direction to, um, return on June twenty-third with the final budget for adoption, and at that point, we would, if we make any changes between now and then, as Jamie alluded to, if we add money after June ninth to pavement management, we could bring that back and discuss that on June twenty-third and incorporate it into the budget. Tonight, it's just simply either continuing the budget hearings June first and June sixteenth, or canceling them.
Okay. Um, I, I am comfortable keeping a higher fund balance here, like we've sort of been discussing, um, so I am okay continuing without June first if we wanna then adopt on the twenty-third, if that, if I could make that a motion if we're comfortable doing?
That is a motion to, uh, cancel the June first budget deliberations, special meeting. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Yeah, and seconded by, uh, council member Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Council member Bertrand?
Agreed.
Council member Brooks?
Aye.
Council member Brown?
Aye.
Vice mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye. No motion passed unanimously. The, um, budget hearing of June first is canceled. Um, and, um, just checking in, staff, do we, do you need anything further from us this evening?
Sorry, I was having trouble on meetings. Real good for the evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the direction and feedback.
Jamie, you having problems on mute team?
Thanks for all your hard work, you guys.
Yeah, it's great meeting you. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna turn us now then, um, until our next regular scheduled meeting on, on May the twenty-sixth at seven PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.